Uh. Hello?
Is Bill pointing at?
Mm-hmm.
We go.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Board of Equalization. Today is Friday, March twenty first, twenty twenty five, and we have a full house. Brett Towne.
Present.
Theresa Sellers.
Present.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson. Notice that this meeting was posted properly on March the fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Okay, for today, we have twenty items on the agenda. This is decision day, thanks. First item on the agenda are the meeting minutes of our January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting.
Uh, there's no additions or corrections. I move to accept minutes of January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five.
A second?
Um, all in favor, Mr. Towne?
Present? Yes, yes.
Miss, yes.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson, and I vote yes. Okay, decision time. Uh, V O E two that previously been posted, that's good, and so our first item is V O E number four. This is account number R one twenty six four thirty one oh three oh. This is the Dixon Family Trust. And. I have. Four hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred. I'm not sure that I heard enough to change the assessor's valuation, but I'll hear what you guys see.
The only, my only concern is it's a thirteen point two percent increase.
Right.
Which is almost three times the county average. The average in this area is significantly lower as well.
Okay, this is Danforth and Bryant.
Yeah, it, the, that's just more the heads.
Two point six nine.
Okay, the median was four hundred seventy-one, six fifty-two, and the.
Four sixty-one was the mean, four sixty-one, one thirty-six.
And the assessor had four sixty-six, so it's under the median and above the mean. Okay, what did you, what did you have, Teresa?
Well, I, I, I agree with Brett. I thought the percentage was a little bit high. There were, you know, a few comps that were quite a bit, um, bigger, and one of them even smaller, like four hundred square feet difference, four to five hundred square feet difference.
Right.
Um, so that was a little bit sticky key, sorry, my laptop's talking to me. Um, when I redid, redid the math based off of the, just the Edmund percent increase, I get four twenty-three, which is quite a bit less. If I do just the county average, it was four thirty-seven seventy-five. So I was kind of leaning towards, you know, going in the middle with the four thirty-seven seventy-five, not quite as low as what he was asking, but, um, doing a fair assessment.
Let me run along.
So you don't look at the mean and the median because you disagree with one of the comps?
Yeah.
Okay.
What'd you come up with, Brett? I don't know. I can figure out how I did this, but I used the township average. And I think I used, I used the two thousand twenty-four. Taxpayer, was that four hundred and twelve? No, that's what the taxpayer was asking.
That's what he wanted.
And it was, and it was, it was four hundred and twelve last year, it must have been frozen. So four twelve, um, two one nine, two six nine is equal to four. Four twenty-three, oh eight, two, oh eighty-two.
Now, what's your one point? Where did you?
Well, just to get it to, to multiply out.
Oh, eighty-three. That's what I got, too, four twenty-three, oh eighty-three, usually just the Edmund.
You got what now, four thirty-three?
Four twenty-three, oh eighty-three.
What was it in?
Four twelve.
That's pretty good. Four twenty-three, where am I? Four sixty-six. Eighty-six. Forty-three.
Yeah, but I didn't show, even if I looked at the two comps that I liked, you can, I got one, four forty-seven to nineteen, which is kind of why I was thinking about split the difference.
The difference between?
The, um, percent increase and the comps going somewhere around four thirty.
Four thirty seems probably splitting the difference in fairness to both parties. For favor.
That would be exact, it was four thirty-seven seventy-five.
But the four forty-seven?
Is just using two comps, looking at the, looking at comp two and comp six.
I'll go with the four forty-seven. I think four twenty-three is too low, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't want to do the four twenty-three either. I was thinking four thirty, or I'm good with four forty-seven as well.
Okay, I entertain a motion to set the fair market value of V O E number four at four hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Even?
Well, four, what did you have, four forty-seven, what?
Two nineteen.
Two, four forty-seven, two nineteen.
So moved.
Uh, a second.
All right, how do you vote, Mr. Towne?
I vote yes.
And Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so. It is set at four hundred and forty-seven, two seventeen. Did we confuse you enough that, did you get that?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we'll move into, the next item is V O E five. Six. Okay, I have four hundred, four hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Is this a no-show?
Yeah.
That was the no-show, and we're gonna, we move that, they. So you're gonna call that, the two that didn't show up and see if they, and give them one more shot?
Uh, yes, one of them, I didn't realize that this one was no-show, um, one of them is gonna reschedule, and the other one has changed twice, so.
Okay, they get one more shot?
Okay.
Okay, so V O E number seven. Is this the lady with the pool?
Yes.
Mike Moran is the one, number five is the one that's changing.
Okay. Okay, the assessor's at six forty. And Mike, what was your mean and median? I don't know.
I didn't bring it.
Okay, I didn't write.
Uh, median was four six, six forty-one, four forty-three. And the mean was six thirty-five, five ten.
Well, they were below the median and above the mean. And she wants to go down from even where she was, it's at six thirty-two, we said it at last year, and she wants five seventy-five. Um.
Yeah, she's wanting to go below even twenty-twenty-three.
That's correct. I can accept either the median or the mean.
Yeah, that's kind of where I.
As well. Or set a number.
Well, actually, I didn't mean that. Y'all either accept the assessor at six forty or I take the, the, the mean, which is six thirty-five.
That's exactly what I was thinking. I should've said that, yeah. I, she didn't seem to like any of the comps, so I kind of shy away from using the comps, which would be the mean, and that leaves us at the six forty, which was the assessor's recommendation.
All right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set the fair market value of V O E number seven at six hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
I'll say, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And how do you vote, Mr. Towne?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
And I vote yes also, so we're gonna set V O E number seven at six hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Okay, the next item is V O E number eight. This is the, this is the.
Mr. Towne.
Okay, the assessor is at two six, two million six ninety, and the property owner is wanting one million five oh eight five. I'm going with the assessor. Um, we, the assessor ended up with a seventy-five percent remodeling, and the permit was one million dollars. The. Why do I have two million five hundred eighty-six five? Is that?
Was the twenty twenty-four assessment.
Twenty twenty-four, okay, so the, the assessor did not increase much over the last year's. Five eighty-six to six ninety, right, how did that? Hundred and four to bits. Okay, what'd you guys think?
Well, to me, the only thing in dispute is the, uh, is the amount of the remodeling that took place, and if it, and if it was.
Just.
Almost every, the whole house remodeled, it's a seventy-five percent. And then there's the next level, it's forty percent. I mean, as I'm looking at comps, old comps and everything, it seems to be, so if you adjusted it back then, forty percent, and multiply the increases forward, you'd be looking at two point one two, which is significantly lower than the assessor's value or last year's value. I just, I can't go that low. At this point.
He finally at the end admitted to more repairs than just the addition.
Exactly.
And which, which would make sense, I mean, it's. You just couldn't give me that you moved out because they were doing an addition. No, you moved out because they were redoing the whole house. At least substantial repairs, and then I don't know that an, an addition would just be one million dollars. I mean, one million dollars would be only for an addition and not something, something else, so it's, um. The very least that should occur is to, to remain what it was last year.
And I can support that.
Um, but, but, you know, with no addition, I'm not sure, 'cause I'm trying to remember the year for the permit.
It was, it was several years ago.
There was a bit, and there was an.
When he said he started after COVID or something.
Where did you come up?
Well, I, I kind of looked at it a couple of different ways. The median on this one was two point four nine eight. The, uh, mean was two point five one oh. Um, so I was kind of leaning towards the median on this one, only because I also went back and looked at the twenty twenty-two value before he started the construction, and then I did the percent increase, the county percent increases from that, that document we got last year, um, and brought it back up to twenty twenty-four, which would make the valuation one point nine, and then a million dollar increase. I don't know, I, I, I just kind of, I, I thought maybe going with the median might be fair.
You, you wanted to be less. It was two, in twen- in twenty-four? I, I, I. All I'm willing to do, if I'm not gonna accept the assessor's value, which I really want to, I, I would. I see no reason for a decrease in that.
So you want to just go with the two five eight six five?
How can you agree with that?
I can go with that. I think, I think there is some adjustment, but I think that takes it, a little bit of it into account. If, if there was, and that's a big if, if there was a discrepancy in the percentage of the.
Remodel.
Remodel.
So I could go with.
I, I agree.
Okay, so we're, we're setting, are we agreeing to set the value at two point five eight six five hundred?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing? Okay. How do you vote on that, Brett? You got?
Why not make that motion?
I'll make a motion to set the value at two million five hundred eighty-six thousand five.
A second?
All in favor, Mr. Towne?
Yes.
Theresa? I vote yes. I vote yes, too, so the, we're setting, uh, V O E eight at two million five hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Okay, the next item is V O E number nine. And this was the gentleman who's in a house that got moved and set there and redone. And he said he had appraisal.
It was outside the county.
That's right. That's right. Okay, so, um. I have, I'm agreeing with a hundred and sixty-two thousand twenty-three, it was a hundred and seventy-three eight, so it came down. It's, 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 it's below where it was even in twenty thirty.
I agree.
Okay.
So I'd like to move on, uh.
V O E nine?
V O E number nine, that we set the market value of this property at the assessor's evaluation, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
A second?
Uh, how do you vote on that, Mr. Towne?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
I vote yes. So we set V O E number nine at a hundred sixty-two thousand. All right, and V O E ten didn't show up.
And that's one, please step forward.
This is, yeah, okay. Uh, so V O E number eleven, um, four hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred is the assessor's valuation. This is the gentleman, this is the guy that overpaid.
This is the fellow who rolled his mortgage.
That's, yeah, yeah.
The overpaid.
Yeah, okay, either we, either we accept willing buyer, willing seller, or we don't, um. He, I understand, he got the lower interest rate, and the owner who, seller who carried it, carried the debt, made up for the lower interest rate by raising price, which he willingly paid. The assessor went from nine hundred and forty-eight thousand down to nine hundred and twenty. And Theresa was asking for between eight hundred thousand to eight hundred and fifty. So I can go with the assessor's valuation of nine hundred and twenty?
I agree.
What'd you tell me, what you want to do?
Well, I, I kind of went back and forth on this one, because he provided a lot of comps that were, like, right next door and on the same street that he was on. And I was a little disappointed that the assessor didn't run those comps with the adjustments, because, you know, there's no way for me to see what those actually are. But I went ahead and ran them, just looked at the ones that were just like right next door, just really, really close to him, and similar in size. I mean, there was one thirty-three seventy-five, and he's thirty-seven twenty-five, same street, was thirty-two, thirty-four square feet, he's thirty-two, thirty-two, so it's just two square feet difference. And it sold for six hundred and ninety-five thousand. Or, or, I'm sorry, the assessor listed it for six hundred and ninety-five thousand. It sold for six hundred and sixty-eight thousand and twenty-three, which is quite a bit less than his. Now, granted, I didn't look at, you know, is it two-car, three-car, you know, garage, or, you know, land value or any of that other stuff. But that, that's what was concerning to me, is that, you know, we didn't really have any good comps, and he provided a lot of comps.
Yeah.
Um, that I, so I kind of reran it, using his sold property as one of the comps, just assuming that that, because it did sell within that timeframe. And.
Where'd you come up?
And I, it, I kind of came up with, uh, eight, hmm, let's see, what was this? I got a few different comps. When I ran those four comps, I came up with eight fifty-seven to fifty. I ran another one that came up to eight ninety-six, I'm trying to remember where that one came from. Let's see. Fifteen, sixteen. Yeah, I'm kind of leaning towards lowering it just a little bit more. I understand that his, his comp, you know, drives up all the value of all the other properties, but the other properties that were literally right next door were quite a bit less, so I do believe that he did probably okay.
Do you want the eight ninety-six, or do you want to come down off the nine twenty something?
Uh, yeah, I want to come down off the nine twenty to, I, I think like eight ninety-six, three fifteen is what I'm thinking. What do y'all think?
What'd you think?
Well. Of course, I've always, I mean, I'm, I'm going back to the point that his, his sale is the one that's the most, uh, most affects his property, and it's one month into the last, you know, it's eleven months into the last fiscal year, tax year. Um, I understand, he's, he's gonna get the benefit of two things. One's gonna get the benefit of, of a very creative um, loan, and he's gonna get the effect that we can just lower, we can do this, we lower his taxes beyond what he paid for the house.
That's a good point.
So he doubled, he doubled, doubles up, he gets, he, he, it's a win-win for him.
Yeah.
When does he take that?
Well, and the assessor did actually lower it less than what he bought the house for.
Yes.
So that's, that's fair.
I, I can go with that, I just hope we don't see a lot more like this.
You can go with the eight ninety-six?
I can go with eight ninety-six.
And I can go with the nine twenty. I, I can kind of.
Okay, let's just flat mine, let's just do flat nine.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Okay, let's, I'll entertain a motion to set the fair market value at nine hundred thousand dollars for V O E.
So moved.
I'll second.
And how do you vote, Brett?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we're gonna set nine, V O E number eleven at nine hundred thousand.
I, I hope we don't start seeing a lot of these.
Yeah, that one was a long time.
We're gonna have a hard time next year without so few houses left standing on. You know, break the counting. Okay, so we'll go to the next item on the agenda. Okay, and the V O E number thirty-seven, and this is Theresa's, Theresa, Theresa Tryon?
Tryon.
Theresa Tryon stuff, okay. So V O E number thirty-seven, the assessor, I think I'm correct on this, Mike, you gently dropped two oh nine fif- two hundred and nine thousand five hundred down to one hundred and sixty-five five?
I show it here, one ninety-seven eighty.
I'm sorry, one ninety-seven eighty, I did this right there, I was putting it wrong. And she wanted seventy-five thousand. Okay, so this is a duplex, not a single-family house, and there was no evidence presented to the assessor, so if we go, if we do anything to give any credence to her argument, we would be gone against our rule of this being an appellate body. So I could, uh, accept the assessor's value at one ninety-seven eighty. And I'll hear from you guys.
Yeah, I, it's very unfortunate that, because they had a lot of evidence and a lot of stuff that would possibly warrant reducing it, but it wasn't presented to the assessor's office prior to coming to us. Really can't take it in consideration. I hope that they understood what we were telling them to, you know, refile next year and write pictures and all of the evidence they had for all the repairs, but we can't really consider it now. The only argument, and I, and I appreciate that the assessor did go ahead and lower it, it some, looks like he lowered it based off of the mean. Um, you know, the only other, the only thing that I could see that would maybe warrant lowering it any further was the twenty twenty-four valuation with the increase, brings it to one seventy-three oh forty-two. Um, and the comps were all twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, so the comps weren't great. They were also pretty, you know, most of them were more than a half a mile away, which that seemed like a pretty dense neighborhood, so.
Well, she owns most of it.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
That's why they were stuck with old, uh, old comps, so what did you think, Brett, too?
Well, I, I thought we need to support the assessor in this case, except I do take your point that um, would, it's just viable to do the twenty-four value plus the increase. Uh, I could, I could support either one of those.
What would that make?
Um, one seventy-three oh forty-two.
Because in our hearts, I think we all know that that's still not the correct value of those.
Yeah.
Okay, so one seventy-three, what?
Oh forty-two.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set the value of V O, V O E number thirty-seven at one seventy, one hundred and seventy-three thousand forty-two dollars.
I'll second.
And how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and you vote yes, all right. So it's a unanimous vote. So V O E number thirty-eight, the assessor started at two seventy and dropped it to two sixty-two, two, so two hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred. And she wanted a hundred and ten thousand, but it's not the same.
And I think we approved this one.
We did, we sat on it, we sat, I have sat there. Okay, so next one is V O E number thirty-nine. Assessor started at two sixty-four, dropped to two fifty-four, six seventy, and she wants seventy-five thousand dollars. And we've got a median, median of two hundred and forty-two thousand and two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred. So it's set above both the mean and the median.
Actually, I showed the mean on this one was two fifty-one, three sixty-one.
What was two forty-two, was that last year?
Yeah, that was twenty twenty-four expectation.
And what was two twenty-two, five hundred?
Uh, that was twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Okay, so what do you, what do you want to say?
I, I'm leaning towards, um, going with the mean, the two fifty-one, three sixty-one, because the twenty twenty-four valuation with the increase, um, brings it to two fifty-three, so I, I could go with either the two fifty-three oh twenty-eight or two fifty-one, three sixty-one, which is the mean.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with the mean on this one, the two fifty-one, three sixty-one.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, I'd like to move on, uh, V O E number thirty-nine, and we set the fair market value of the property at two hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, how do you vote, Mr. Towne?
Yes.
And Ms. Theresa?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we're gonna set the value of V O E thirty-nine at two hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Next up is V O E number forty. Started at two forty-two, assessor loaded to two hundred and thirty-one thousand one seventy, median of ten thirty-one, one sixty-nine, mean of two twenty-five, six ninety-five, and she wants eighty thousand. Obviously, we're not drawing the eighty thousand. But so the, it's a, it's at the median and above the mean. You want to take the mean of two hundred and twenty-five, six ninety-five?
That's what I'm leaning towards.
Okay, you agree, Brett?
I can agree.
Okay, you want to make that motion, Teresa?
I'll make a motion that we set the fair market value at two twenty-five, six ninety-two.
Second it, Brett?
Second.
And I vote yes. Brett?
Yes.
Teresa, you guys? All right, we set, uh, B O E forty at two hundred twenty-one, two hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Okay, B O E number forty-one, the assessor said two eighty-one five and she's at one hundred thousand. This is another duplex.
And this is their residence.
Where they live, right.
Yeah, I could find no reason to, what the assessor suggested.
I agree. I'd like to set fair market value of B O E forty-one at two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Mr. Town?
Yes.
I vote yes. B O E number forty-two, the assessor said a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred, she wanted eighty-five. The median is one hundred and fifty-three, four fifteen, the mean was a hundred and fifty-four, five oh seven. So the assessor is below both. So I'll entertain a motion to set B O E forty-two at one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred.
So per, so moved.
Uh, I'll second.
All right, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Teresa, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. The next one, B O E forty-three. The assessor reduced from two twenty-seven five hundred to two hundred and sixteen. The median was five hundred and fifteen nine nine five and the mean, two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four. And Teresa Tran wanted seventy thousand.
Well, the assessor's valuation is between the, uh, mean and the median, and it's all over the last year's tax year, so. I feel like, um, supporting the assessor's, uh, valuation.
I agree.
I'll entertain a motion to set the fair market value of B O E number forty-three at two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Um, how do you vote, Brett?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, B O E number forty-four. Uh, Teresa Tran wanted one hundred thousand. It began at two hundred and sixty-three, the assessor lowered it to two hundred and fifty-five, which was the median, and the mean was two fifty-one.
Yeah, this one I was, I was, um, referring using the mean because the, um, twenty-twenty-four tax increase value supported that as well. So I like two fifty-one, six seventy-two.
I could agree with that.
Okay, we're gonna move it, make a motion, Teresa.
I'll make a motion to set the value at two fifty-one, six seventy-two for B O E oh forty-four.
Second.
How do you vote, Teresa?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, uh, B O E number forty-five, the assessor lifted it at two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Teresa Tran wanted it at seventy-five thousand. I have a median of two hundred and seventy-six nine and a mean of two hundred and eighty-one eight four six, so the assessor's below both of them.
I could support the assessor's valuation in this instance.
Me as well.
I'd like to move on B O E forty-five, we set the fair market value of the property at two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Brett?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, B O E number forty-six. The assessor came down to two hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty from two hundred and thirty-eight, and she wants a hundred thousand. And there's a rent, there's rent on this of a thousand dollars. This one's actually about. Um, median was two hundred and eighteen, two eighty, and the mean was two hundred and sixteen, five, nine, six. So we're at the median.
Yeah, I'm good with the assessor's valuation, two eighteen, two eighty.
I am as well.
All right.
I'll make a motion to set the fair market value at two eighteen, two eighty for B O E oh forty-six.
Second.
I vote yes.
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 All right. B O E number forty-seven, the assessor has it at two hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fifty. It was at two hundred and ninety thousand and twenty-four. It's rented for twelve hundred. Um, Teresa Tran wanted a hundred and ten thousand. I have, the mean is two hundred and ninety-eight.
Yeah, I, I saw no reason to reduce the assessor's valuation at two ninety-three, eight fifty.
Uh, nor I, so I'll make the motion to set the fair market value of B O E forty-seven at two hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Brett?
I guess.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Last item for setting valuation is B O E number forty-eight. The assessor reduced from a hundred and fifty-six thousand fifty-one to a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine eighty. Teresa Tran wanted sixty thousand. This is the one that has no difference. There's a median of one hundred and forty-seven nine eighty-two and a mean of one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-four.
Yeah, I was kind of leaning towards using the, um, mean, yeah.
I could support that. I'd like to move on B O E number forty-eight, that we set the fair market value at one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Brett?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, is there any citizen participation? There is, um, we, listen, I, you won't be in this. Okay, so we're, we're meeting Monday and Nancy, are you calling the next week?
No, it's Tuesday.
I'm going, that's why we have to skip. Oh, that's fine, okay. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, so.